No, I didn't put much. Very well hired, so he did sign one. Okay, I had six thirty. So basically called a March eighth, twenty twenty-one, six thirty P M. Meeting in the Westport Town Council order. The first thing we will have is led with.
Led with to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What we're doing tonight is kind of a two-parter. We will open the public hearing for the USDA application. And Rachel.
All right, thank you. I'll try to be quick because I know we've a lot on the agenda tonight. The town of Westport has what's known as a separate sanitary sewer system, meaning that your wastewater system is just supposed to have sanitary sewage in it and no sewer line. So there shouldn't be downwatering with water, you know, stuff like that connected to it. Throughout the years, everybody may know, the town has struggled with what's called infiltration and inflow, which is somehow groundwater, surface water is getting into the filter. This isn't not divine, or is it supposed to have this much wet weather, still more or even more in it, meaning that when it's the lift station, sometimes the station gets sucked up. So you can have backup in the system, and it's known as a S D. though, like sanitary sewer overflow, that's going to point to the ground. And you can imagine, it's a name that that is not good. It's actually illegal, and some have sewers coming out of the handle. And we know that people have all been drinking rainwater, the I N. I. staying in the system. And we're just trying to find that and stop it. So the board has been very proactive over many many years in doing improvement projects. And sooner we try to reduce the overflow and treat the water, and make sure all of it's going through our treatment plant for the garden. Unfortunately, we can't item this, if you're going to come on the shore each year, and they can't have any overflow, no matter what, can't have any. So because of that, in two thousand eighteen, the town entered into a reorder with item, as well as an early warning sewer ban. So what that means is item says, here's a compliance schedule that you must meet to fix this problem. And the early warning sewer ban, based on limits of your common ability to play. And you can't take row in the way that you may plan until you fix the sewer problem. So the board has been following that plan. And the last step that was completed was the creation or the writing of a preliminary engineering report, C E. R. And to study the sanitary system, we looked at the lift stations, we looked at the sewers and the treatment plants, and we went through multiple alternatives. And we sat down, had a meeting with the operators, Damon, and both the boards, to go over these alternatives. And put together our recommended holistic, the recommended project that's going to fix this problem. Get off the agreed order and write clean the place or early warning. So here, this is the public hearing floor, so I'm here for questions. The recommended project includes collection of improvements, so we're going to do some more studying, see if we can find where the water is coming from. As you guys probably know, because you live here, it's really been hard to do. And the town has been actively trying to, and still trying to do that every time they recommend. We're going to try to do some of that. We're also going to increase the lift station capacity, so then a new lift station can pump more to the plant. And then increase treatment at the plant, so it can treat all the water that comes in. And the next step, which is all the compliance, but little items, is to reach out and see what kind of running ramps is out there to help fix this problem. So that is the next step the board is pursuing. I brought the map. There's also one on the wall right back there. And that kind of just shows the outline of the collection system, where we would be looking to do improvements. We'll obviously target these areas that we know are S D. those, the water coming out of the handle. We want to make sure we really study those. And then it also shows what treatment plant is and where we would put in the new lift station. Any questions? Is anybody coming?
When you put in the new lift station, does that increase the capacity?
Yes, so we'll keep the old lift station and put a new one.
And that raises the capacity of the lift station, is that? Is there more houses that can be built? So is that why they need more money, more money to do that? You got to increase the sanitary, the sewer plant itself?
Yes, because.
And that's not part of this?
That is, yes. So we're increasing the treatment capability of the plant itself.
So how much work you can, I mean, how big a degree of work is it? Buy homes?
So right now, if it doesn't rain, you guys can add, you have the capacity to add homes. The problem is when it rains. And any new homes you add are going to be, they're going to be tight, the sewer lines aren't going to have holes in it, it's not going to allow any more rainwater. So really, yes, you will have a lot more capacity to add homes. I don't have a number of that. I think we kind of talked about that. I don't have a number. I'll talk in my head, get back if you want it. But really, the question or the problem right now is when it rains. You have and you will have more than enough capacity to add more homes. Does that answer the question?
It did, I did. Sounds like trying to find out where the water, the groundwater is coming from. They're probably just a gated system, maybe.
It is, yeah. And it's not, it's not a problem that's unique to Westport. It's all across the state, across the country. It's just really hard to find where the water is coming from. And you guys have a high groundwater here, so, and especially with the creeks and streams and ditches running to town. Somehow it's getting in, and as I said today, this one's a little. Water's going to find a way.
You think it's helpful to get any water, or you think it's still people that have downspouts and stuff?
The town works really hard on the downspout. I think you have an ordinance on that thing, so they do this correctly. I think it's a combination of everything. I feel like if there was a one single source, we would have found it by now. But I have to say like a lot of little things that just kind of add up continuously. We did some some flow metering in maybe in twenty nineteen, I think. And basically, we found that it's coming from both side of town, all the suburbs and south. Really inconclusive, and just, it's kind of coming everywhere. So this, this project, you know, as we move forward, and it's, we're going to do it step by step, and the board is reaching out and doing the next step, which is seeing what kind of grant money suits their.
What about raising the rates? I mean, is there enough, can you generate enough revenue by raising sewer?
I mean, those are the possibilities. And depending on the kind of grant money that's out there, that maybe comes into the board.
I mean, I know well, it's what's the last thing we all want.
Yeah.
You're saying it out loud because it sounds like.
Yeah.
It's not likely they'll get the millions of dollars they need to do this project.
Yeah, I can't tell you what government these people do, but. There, unfortunately, because we're under a reorder, the item has to do something. Really looking at all the alternative, all the options for funding, I think it's the best place.
When's the end date?
Twenty twenty-three would be about this time, twenty twenty-three would be when, if everything goes to schedule, which, you know, that's always intended to change. That would be when compliance would be over and we would all be, or be agreed order and early warning.
We had quite a lengthy discussion on two meetings during the new guy got in there, so we wanted to minimize the impact that's on. If, if everybody using the system. They've worked really hard to explore that for us, and some of the grant one and things like that. In both the waterside and the sewage side, we recognize there needs to be some different management to have a slight profitability, and I don't want to say profitability, but a top profit. But it's money to set aside so that the next time we have these repairs or replacements that go forward, it's money that's there as opposed to money we're reaching out. And just trying to have it do a twenty percent increase at the time.
Oh, we talked about having to be careful this morning.
Yeah, there's a lot of things in the works to try and protect dramatic increases in the future connected to the new construction project, so we've got a lot of them.
Well, I'll be here if anybody has more questions. Thank you.
What we kind of look at, we're in a position of like most towns are across America right now. The infrastructure needs work, needless to say, so it's not, we're not unique to what's going on around us. We're getting to the point where we can't keep kicking the can down the road, and there's decisions that need to be made of where we go from here to where we go in the future. We, when I first came on the town council, I believe in Westport, and I think we have opportunities to grow. I think some people don't want to move forward. I think some people are willing to leave the status quo the way that it is. Well, the problem with that is, I can walk out my door every morning and see how things change. Sun changes, the nature changes, everything's changing around me. If my body gets older, I change, everything's in the same flux of changing. So what the town council decided, okay, moving forward, we are on an agreed order, so I didn't say, you're not going to sit there and not do anything. We're not going to let you get by with that. And so is this a commitment definitely to spend money, to put in a waste? Not a new waste treatment, but an alternative so that we can take care of and get off the item. With us, we're exploring the options. This is no way of saying we have not signed any paperwork, saying that we are committed to, we're going to borrow this nine ninety, rate's going to go up and all that. And I want to be real clear about that right here. We are just exploring options to see how much it's going to cost, and we can make decisions down the road. That's all this is. We see some things going in a positive direction, I'll probably be short with this, out there at three Mobile Home Park, that's been cleaned up, and new ones are going in out there. Next to the police department, we, that building has been torn down now. We have a lot of ones on the list that will be, as we can get to it, will be condemned and tore down. George Can across the street, he's having that building is being repaired and renovated. So there's things that we are starting to see the ball going, and then this is just part of it. Is it an easy road ahead? No, not necessarily. Is it something we have to do? Yes, we do. So I, I come in on the town council, and John and Joyce, they can speak up, but we see that need needs to be done, and we're committed to getting that done. Is it going to make some people unhappy? Oh, yeah, everything to do makes somebody unhappy. It's either way, you're happy, you're unhappy, and there's some people in the middle of the road. But this is something we're committed about doing, and we are going to do. Do we need help from townspeople and support? Yes. We're going through this time of the COVID virus, and that's changed people's attitudes, and made some people grumpier and more stressed upon families and different things. But the thing is, we'll get to it and go on. This isn't a permanent thing. So we just can't sit back and wring our hands and say, oh, what was that, sort of the way things were going? No, we're going to move ahead because we made a commitment over the town of Westport, we're going to clean this place up. The water is going to be better, and we're going to get that going, and that should be completed this year, that project. We've seen new water meters put in, we'll forgive average readings on the water being used. So this is the town council's commitment, that this is the direction we're going to go. And I'm willing to sit down and talk to anybody about it in a respectful way. I will tell you right off the bat, as far as if somebody wants to jump on me, use profanity, and talk to me that way. I won't disrespect you when I talk to you. I don't expect you to disrespect me when you talk to John, or the town employees, or Joyce. We will treat you with decency and respect, no matter who that you are. And that's our commitment to the people here within the town. And so that's going on with the USDA application. And I want to be clear, we're just exploring right now. Because item says, you guys better be working for the solution to your problem. And turning our back on it and, and sitting on our hands is not the right for a solution. So enough for me to say on that, if Joyce or John was saying they know what they're looking to. If not, is there any other questions just on this part of?
We can build new homes if we get this down, or can we build new homes now? If I'm a Westport, and after you have the census in the last twenty to twenty-five years, our population has went down by two hundred people. We took things down, we don't rebuild nothing. We took our home down, we need a new home. We get people here, businesses, we're down, everything's great.
I wholeheartedly agree with you.
We can build houses right now.
We're in an early warning, we're not in a shutdown at this point. So we do have the opportunity, and what this will do is this will flip us out of that early warning, so we don't have to worry about that and eliminate the capacity. The amount of water that comes in, it's not minimal, it's exponential. So the ten events, maybe, maybe ten events that happen a year are so dramatic that it throws that system off to that degree. Otherwise, we would have issues. So, yes, the answer to that is, we would be able to continue to add even currently. But this would open that up, will get us out of that early warning.
There's movement going on right now, there's probably, the people moving from cities to rural areas. We could get thirty, forty houses built around here. If you, you would sell them quick, you would have floodways coming in, you'd have all kinds of things coming in. This town would grow, and businesses, businesses will come where money's at. If there's no money here, they can't come here, so. And anyway, if you guys ever need help, any way I can help you get houses and things through on here, I'll help all again.
And that's what we want to do, and that's good. That's the attitude we want, and that's what we're working on. Because we talked to a reliever, and I'm pretty sure with this, they said because of this virus, people are relooking at issues of living in a bigger city. So when I found that out, and this was last year, and then it come across, well, okay, we have an opportunity, like you said. But there's certain things that we have to get in place. I hope you stay for the whole meeting, because we've got some other things we want to talk about and work on along the lines that you're talking about. But, and John said too, what he said as far as the inflows, yes, it's dramatic. Because if you notice through the years, when we get spring rain, we don't get a half inch, we don't get a quarter inch, we get two inches at one time. And I guess they just come, they just come in, and we can't, our system can't handle it. And so we're looking, and we're committed, that, yeah, we want to bring more business in, and want to, the downtown area, I'm glad George is. Want to renovate that over there, and I talked to the guy that's doing it, he wants to move his business in there and have it. This is wonderful, this is the direction I want to go. And I believe we can do it, if we work together. But I can't overemphasize enough, there is some people in this town that want to stay the same way, and might say.
They want flusher toilets. They want to build flusher toilets.
Well, yeah, we want.
We got to at least fix that.
Yeah.
And I, I get it, that's two different problems.
And two, I don't know if you're aware of that, but this gentleman over here is someone that's put in how many, twenty-three new homes right now? Twenty-eight new homes?
The trailer park?
Yes.
But they're double-wise.
I'm glad I could buy it. You know, I first opened up this, we had what, twenty-nine, thirty, twenty-nine, thirty bands.
Plus, in the Alomir Run, that, that is scheduled to go forward, isn't it?
Yes.
I haven't heard any more than that.
I think they've got me okay, though, to do it. I don't know when they're going to do it.
Are you, you're on?
Uh huh.
I think there's thirteen homes there, looking at that background?
I think so, something like that, but. But we, they came already for their, for us to okay it, they have to go through all of their. But it is coming, it is coming. It's, it's took a long time for us to get this back. You know, fifteen years ago, this town was bustling, so nothing's been done for fifteen years. I mean, not good done the way it should be. We're trying real hard, and, you know, even we can't give you all the answers. But if, if the town will work with us, we'll work with them, we'll be as nice as we can to anybody that wants to do anything. We're not going to put you down because of who you are, or where you're from, or whatever. We live out.
But this, the sewer system, I didn't get in on the first effort, you know. But yeah, hey, it's old. I'm seventy years old, and I played in the water sewer lines on the east side of town when they dug them. I was just a little kid.
I live right in the middle of town. I've lived there for fifteen years and two. My kids used to play in the creek. And when it rains, like we got last summer, the river runs through. So it, yeah, there's some problems, and not just at my house, I'm not complaining, I put in my seventy. I know even the church, the Baptist church, it's been there since two thousand sixteen. No. Two thousand and six, maybe, or eighteen, I don't, I mean, they're a long time. It flooded the basement of that beautiful church, and this ruined everything. It's been fixed now, to help the people that go to church there, but you wouldn't go where we can have that. I sit on the hill. The church sits probably six foot off the street level.
So we'll move on with this. So we're, we're open to other ideas. John and I and Joyce, we don't have all the answers. I never, I would never claim that we do. But we're always open to help with suggestions and a different way of thinking. Because we know it's just not going to be just, if we want to turn this town around, it's not going to be just the three of us. It's not going to happen. I can come up and say, get on the dream of all kind of great ideas, that's one thing, but implementing is something else. It's going to take all of us working together on this, but I believe we did it done. But anyway, I need to move on. Is there any other questions on this public hearing for the USDA application? If not, I will close the public hearing for the USDA application and move on to the regular order of business for the Westport Town Council. And the first thing is the approval of minutes. We changed something on that, used to, we used to read the minutes, but now we're sending them. Minutes are being sent out by email to the three of us for our, to us to read. And so is there any addition or corrections to those counts?
I have, I did have a feeling about this. If we don't read it, then someone kind of missed the last meeting. And then the.
They're at the website. Yeah, I was just going to say, like, tomorrow morning.
It's on the website.
The minutes.
Yes, for those at home.
Just trying to cut it short.
You can only put your crew minutes up, which means that the minutes in the last meeting will go up tomorrow morning.
I hope for our viewers at home, the minutes of the previous monthly meeting will be on the website, so we might go to the website and look at it. So do I have a motion to accept it?
I make the motion with my.
On second. On favor, aye. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the approval of funeral deeds, favorable vouchers, adjustments, and monthly bills. So I need to break that down separately.
I think we can make it all in one, if I make it all in one motion, then they can do it in one motion.
I think we want to do it separately. Do I have a second?
And I hope so.
On favor, aye.
We're in.
You can sign that first.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Next time, next time.
Oh, next time?
Next time.
Next, I have on our agenda, okay, water project updates.
Okay, again, I'll tie it short. I have the team, everybody aware, there's the contractors in town, there's like some water meters. That's coming pretty well. I think they're done, or?
Uh, just about. We're down to, we're going to do the high school next week, let's fill in Spring Break. We have a meat locker left, and a little new grow. I think we have a couple of residents to do, but we're, we're pretty much.
Pretty close to the beginning.
About four or five years from being.
They did, they did give us the proposal, so when Omera blew up, they're doing their investigation of the lines, or gave them line work in town. And they found that some of the lines in the ground are not in as good a shape as they initially. So they gave us proposals for some extra modifications, where is it the line, how to connect them. We're reviewing those. The next step, we need to make sure it's kind of, it can be written in the budget, that's the thing I previously. So I'm hopeful that we'll have something ready to talk about at our construction meeting. Which is, construction meeting for both contractors is March eleventh this week. Nine A M. and then ten A M. at town hall. Does, we've got the plants going on, and now that hopefully the weather is, is warm up, they should be moving real fast. That's all. I think we may use a little handout. I have. Favor was from Kenan, the contractor of the plant, sanitation number four. Oh, yeah, yeah, so I'll, okay, so sanitation number four, I think I did send you those. And you can sign that afterwards if you want, and to approve it.
Okay, I make the motion that we.
On favor, aye.
The last thing, like Gloria had, is just an approval for another R P. R. We had someone on site when you weren't off. Maybe need to fill in in the future, we just, for those people. I think Ryan's been to start to minister about.
Um, that's probably, certainly the motion that the news came through for him.
On favor, aye. Uh, is there any questions for Rachel on the water project? Anybody who'd like to ask, how, what's going on, how a lot of things going on, completion dates, anything?
Well, I'll be here.
Next thing on our agenda is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one, Westport Employee COVID-nineteen Policy Update.
Oh, I think, let's see, I think the update is thought as if I got to end it today, so it's dated it. I don't know if you want to read it, or if you want me to tell you what the update for, or. I think so, yeah. Well, it's been edited, it was.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one, adopting an infectious disease employee personnel policy for the town of Westport, Indiana. And maximum date, March the eighth, twenty twenty-one. This policy will be an effective meeting leave, and will remain a policy to prevent and control infectious diseases among town of Westport employees. To maintain a healthy workplace, we are implementing the following time and attendance policy for the town of Westport employees who have been exposed, or potentially exposed to an infectious disease, including but not limited to COVID-nineteen. Close contact will be defined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention when referenced in this policy. Number one, all employees will be required to self-monitor their health conditions, including taking their temperature prior to reporting to work. Number two, employees with a fall apart time will not be penalized for standard periods of absence due to illness from an infectious disease or occurrence to this policy. Number three, an employee who experiences symptoms from infectious disease shall not report to work. This is included, but not limited to fever. An employee is not eligible to return to work until fever free, without fever free prevention medicine. For twenty-four hours, a plan permitted by the Employees Department did, will base the decision on current CDC guidelines. Number four, an employee who lives with another person who experiences symptoms from infectious disease shall not report to work. This includes. This includes but not limited to the fever. The employee is not eligible to return to work until the person is symptom-free without medication and the employee has no symptoms of infectious disease for at least a week, seven days. Employees must be permitted to return to work by department head before returning to employment. Number four, an employee has traveled outside the state and has been in close contact with others who show symptoms of an infectious disease shall not report to work for at least seven days. This period may be extended, particularly if the employee experiences the same or similar symptoms based on town department head's decision. Employees are strongly encouraged to limit personal interactions outside the resident or workplace when infectious rates are high and rapidly changing. This includes but does not limit to travel outside the county. Further, employees should practice social distancing six to twelve feet when possible during workouts. This includes interaction with other employees. It is understood not all employee interactions can be limited to the appropriate social distancing. It is employees' responsibility to minimize these encounters. Number seven, an employee who is directed by department head to stay home and not working from home under the above conditions, paragraph one, three, specifically rated with infectious disease, will first use up two weeks of paid COVID leave defined as the following. A maximum of eighty hours or approximately two weeks of paid mandatory leave determined by the town, Westport Department Heads or Westport Town Council. Second, use sick time. Police employees will first use compulsory time first in sick time. Third, use vacation time of the seven days or no more than fifty-six hours only if the employee has more than seven days vacation time. Employees without available vacation will not through vacation, will proceed to step four. Four, four, use paid administrative leave on and after leave as prescribed above has been exhausted. Paid administrative leave is defined as paid leave while an employee is mandated to stay home by the Westport Town Council and must be pre-approved by the Westport Town Council. Eight, since appropriate equipment is available during this time, public workers and employees will each use a separate vehicle. The superintendent will make those necessary assignments. The town hall will remain closed to the public while state advisory levels are coded orange or red. Westport Police Department will continue business as usual, using precautions outlined by the CDC. The chief of police will be charged with monitoring the ongoing situations and making adjustments to operations as necessary. For safety reasons, any changes or modifications being necessary by the chief police, obey operations will be disseminated only to authorize law enforcement personnel unless there is a serious risk to the public. If an employee falls ill, they will report to and advise their conditions as be able to their supervisor in the event they may need to take action to prevent any possible serious health risks to the public and/or the other employees. Employees mandated to quarantine by the department head will be expected to follow employer recommendations. Failure to follow these procedures will result in disciplinary action up to and including unpaid suspension and/or termination. Infectious disease policy supersedes any previous policy with a duration of health emergency and will apply to any future federal mandated infectious disease legislations unless otherwise amended. Administered.
I make the motion that we accept that most of the.
Do I have a second? On favor, aye. Once I. Okay. Next one, I think this will be the second reading for the, uh, regulation on the home policy. Okay, we have a new, uh, ordinance, number twenty twenty-one dash one, ordinance of the city of Westport amending regulations of mobile homes. Whereas the Westport Town Council, mayor and after council has previously adopted a certain ordinance regulating the regulation of mobile homes, specifically ordinance nineteen eighty-eight dash three. Whereas the council now desires to amend the previous ordinance regulating the regulation of mobile homes in its entirety and now therefore be it ordained by the town council of Westport that, number one, ordinance nineteen eighty-eight dash three entitled regulation of mobile homes shall be amended and read as follows. Section one, the purpose of this ordinance, mobile home, means a detached resident, residential unit designed for transportation after fabrication on streets or highways on open wheels, on flatbeds or other trailers, and arriving at the site where it is being used, complete and ready for occupancy, except for minor and incidental unpacking or assembly operations, locations on jacks or other temporary foundations, connections to utilities and the like. A recreational travel trailer, self-propelled, or designed to be pulled by automobile for recreational purposes and not being used as a residence is not to be considered as a mobile home. B, manufactured home is a dwelling unit which has more than nine hundred and fifty square feet of occupied space and which was designed and built in a factory after January the first, nineteen eighty-one, and which bears the C.O. certificate that was built in compliance with the Federal Manufacturing, Housing, Construction, and Safety Standards laws of nineteen seventy-four, United States Code fifty-four zero one. Section two, no mobile home shall be parked within the town of Westport except a mobile home that is no older than ten years old and a mobile home parked licensed by the state of Indiana. No mobile homes located within the town of Westport may be added to or enlarged in any respect. Any mobile home or manufactured home shall be, at all times, be required in safe condition if it becomes unsafe, except that if any mobile home or manufactured home located within the town of Westport to be damaged by fire, wind, flood, explosion, or earthquake that is damaged beyond fifty percent of its fair market value, it shall be completely removed from the town of Westport or reconstructed only in accordance with this ordinance. Section four, any manufactured home located within the town of Westport must be attached to a permanent foundation unless complied with the town and towns in the Kier County Building Code and Regulations. Number five, a structure, land, or premise built or used in violation of this ordinance is a common nuisance. The owner of such structure, land, or premise is liable for maintaining a common nuisance. The town board may authorize any action to be brought in the name of the town to join in the violation of this ordinance as to require the removal of any structure found to violate this ordinance, removal to be at the cost of the owner. This ordinance shall be in full effect and full force and effect after this passage.
I make the motion that we accept that.
You're on second? On favor, aye. Next on the agenda is the con- condemnation guidelines nineteen ninety-nine dash one, ordinance update.
I don't, I don't know if you necessarily have to read the whole thing.
Why don't you?
Yeah, it is fairly lengthy.
Yes, it is.
I think you can just indicate that the only change from the previous ordinance is the, uh, name where it indicated, uh, town coordinator is now, uh, I think it's public, the public facilities superintendent.
Yes.
Other than that, but other than that, the ordinance is, is extending that currently in the book. So the only change is, is, we're, previously indicated town, uh, Westport town coordinator now says, uh, public, uh, utilities superintendent.
Okay, we, I make the motion that we go ahead and accept it, that is, we can skip to the boarding.
And there's two, if the president has allowed to, and, and sergeant will send that along.
On favor, aye. One thing I might say too, for people, we don't, we have ordinance on the internet.
All of them are on our website.
So any of the ordinance or any of these adoptions, uh, the new ordinances are on our website. All we gotta do is go to the website and every ordinance that we have is, will be on the website.
Is it something that we voted on tonight, that will be on in the next few little days?
What we did, what that ordinance is, is, uh.
Well, let's, let me go back, because in order for you to pass it on one reading, you gotta, you have to first make a motion that should be unanimous to pass it on. If you wanna do it first reading, otherwise you gotta bring it up again next month.
Okay, how do we do it on the first reading?
You gotta have unanimous motion to pass it on the first reading, you gotta vote on that, and then it has to be a three to two vote. At first.
Okay, so we gotta re-vote.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's okay. I don't really need to do it the right way. This is, for those that, uh, don't know who he is, this is, uh, Mr. Andrews, Senator Andrews, and he is our town attorney.
Trying to keep our road free.
And, uh, Scott keeps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Scott has to keep, you know, keep on top of me, because sometimes we, in a slower town through the year, sometimes we've done things out of order and not necessarily the right way or the legal way of doing it. So it's Scott here passing motions and the agenda, we're doing it the right way now. So he's, is, I'm thankful that he's here and gives me that, so we will have another vote to pass this on the first reading. Do I have a motion? Okay, I mean, we all have to vote again?
Yeah, we've gotten up.
Okay, on favor, aye. Now we can sign it?
You are, you're going to pass it, so I think you're right there. It's a new standard of order.
Okay, thank you. Oh, my gosh.
It was unanimous, otherwise we just want those, um, amendments reflect that.
All right. Okay, John, you're up on the ADA compliance plan.
Uh, we have some ADA Title Six questioning going on along with, not to get the address in, but there's some.
P T and we, we have been talking about.
Well, it was for the grant, and, and we need to comply with the ADA Title Six. And then there was also some sort of, uh, analysis of the growing ways that need to be done. Questioning how to do it, how to apply for it, what makes us eligible for the grants and, and, and how we can figure ourselves that out. Some initial thoughts were that, that some of the surrounding communities have taken adhorbent keys of, of the, I think, it was not what we were talking about. I did some research on that. It was not that adhorbent. Um, we can get some assistance with the Purdue local technical assistance program with some of that. Um, but we could also just look at having somebody in and assisting us in preparing those documents. And both of those segments, the, the first document for the Title Six, cost was somewhere around fifteen hundred dollars. Um, I know, I, I spoke with the president of the council in St. Paul. Um, creating is what gets it done there, you know, all that fee. And then I forget what the other acronym was for the, um, paving analysis that had to be done. But that was an additional fifteen, or we could look at having LTAP take care of that for us. The only difference is, is that that extension may take a few little bit longer to get that done as opposed to adding a higher one. So, um, it just depends what direction we want to, to, to go in there to get that.
Well, I had a little bit of discussion on that. I, I think that that's a very, very, um, promise.
Right, yeah, yeah, I mean, it is.
So, that is entirely, I mean, maybe some.
Yeah, I mean, if, if everybody thinks that that's what we will get, I mean, I've got four, I've contacted everybody to.
I feel that we can do that in-house. I don't, it's the compliance plan, which is just a matter of setting our timeline, deciding how far out we wanna go with planning. I feel like that's the right document that we can do here. Um, I created it, I think I gave you guys an example, I had it completed over two thousand nineteen. We didn't go ahead and turn it in because I found a loophole, so we didn't have to start that process. But because we've already got it created and I worked with Vise, Gay, I think it was the same from LTAP. I feel like we could do that and save at least fifteen hundred dollars. The other, the teaser study that has to be done has always been done in-house also. So I.
Is that something that, that we just went and did it?
Yeah.
We did it for the last round, yes. Okay. Well, you did, I think you do it, you basically update, you know, every time prior to, uh, your grant, because that's what you're, you're basing your needs on, is, is the road survey.
We have to do it every two to three years. They did an expiration date on it, and our last one expired last year. We used that one for the last three projects that we've done. Um, I feel like we have enough of them, though, but as far as that stuff, we could do it. Where we will probably need some help from is with actually the compliance. Uh, people telling us what we need to do to be compliant, working with community dealing or somebody that can actually tell us what we're complying on and what we're not. But, but.
I can see the positive look on some people's faces. You know, eight, being ADA compliant with the federal government is, if anybody heard of that. You know, what we're hoping for, and that's what I call a period plan.
American disability.
American disabilities.
Yeah.
But I, I, I don't know if you guys remember the example.
What it is, it's the Title Six Federal Government Disability Act. And, and coupled along with that, we have to set up a mechanism if people have complaints. And we have to set up a mechanism to handle that complaint. We've also gotta have somebody that's in charge of that. And it's something that the federal government, when we go for grants for our roads and other things, that we have to then comply and swift, I mean. Yeah.
I, I, I know that's for St. Paul specifically, it's a compliance F area that is, is why they had it on my.
I think when we get to that point, we'll be back, but with the initial document, we just need to make some decisions on how we're gonna plan. Um, the initial document that we have to submit to Will Gay is just a document that says on, on this amount of time, we will assess our situation. So six months from now, we're gonna put a timeline, we're gonna hire somebody, or we're gonna do this. And that buys us a lot of time just by completing that document, but it does require a lot of decision-making on council part as far as how you want to handle that or.
Yeah, that was the template that you just set for us.
Yeah. Yeah, but that lives by us all the time to discuss how we're gonna be complying in future, for sure.
Do you remember ADA compliance, because we don't have handicapped sidewalks, but that'd be ADA compliant. We had sidewalks going down Main Street. We had, they had, they all be accessible with wheelchairs.
We are.
That's ADA compliant. This building, where the wheelchair accessible to the restrooms, the doors coming in and out, that would have to be ADA compliant. When, and, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, then kind of bringing up speed, we're kind of behind on that and getting this done. We've got so much thing to do, like this, 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 and this, so we're trying to catch, play catch-up on some things. This is one we've gotta do, we can't give the cannon down the road anymore about it. Because when we do go to federal, I think they want us to have, yeah, so.
Well, we'll do it compliant.
Yes, compliant.
It's just gotta be on file, right?
Yes.
We've already made, one of the big approvals to a police station was to have that accessible restroom going in and out. This is already been accessible in this public building. So it's just to have this piece taken filed so that we can comply with the plan.
Because guys think we, and then, uh, definitely, so we'll move on next one. We've not only got the state looking over our shoulder, but we also have the federal government looking over our shoulder as well on some issues, and we have to comply with.
Or maybe I'll give the, you know, first.
Yeah.
Did you, some security already made contact with LTAP, so I mean.
Yeah, that was two thousand nineteen, June of two thousand nineteen, I was going through it and went through, they have special training. They said, you have to be ADA compliant, and then you don't have all that. They said, you have to be ADA compliant, and we don't have that, so... So there's a lot of it, it's still, whatever, really many that help is when we actually have to make, make the town compliant.
And that personally went with the system, so... Let's take a look at it offline and see if we can buy us some time.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is water bill penalties.
Here, I was, I was told that I might need somebody here that wanted to bring that up, but I don't think so. Um, there's been a lot of questions about...
If you want to sit down in a chair, I would like you sure.
Sure. And you only have to be through the at work now today.
I do that?
Yeah, so, yeah, you can come in a little bit.
Yeah, if you want to come in and sit down, that's fine.
We could, we could take a chair.
Alright, the next thing, we thought we might have some people here that wanted to talk about the water bill penalties. And something that we wanted to nail down, show that everyone in town, we're all on the same page on that, that's what we wanted to discuss. There was some among us that felt that to have a water penalty if you're late on your bill was not quite fair in some instances. So, this is one of the main things that we wanted to hash out tonight. Uh, I mean, most people aren't here with this issue, so...
So, Gary, what I'm getting at is, um, I was, presently when I moved my office, I found a bunch of old binders and things, and there were some examples of a uniformed utility billing procedure, and I found that I thought, oh, this is perfect, because this is what, this is the question. And currently, we don't really have any utility billing procedures. I also know this is one of the expectations to the audit. We had the sewer audit last summer, and they asked us to create a written billing procedure for the water, uh, so that we can start improving our audit, so that it's kind of on my to-do list anyway. And then because there had been some concerns about when we filed the rent but fees on a compliance bill, then this kind of all came up and we just researched. So, I started filling out this billing procedure, but it is lengthy and it wasn't detailed exactly about how we handle everything. In the past, there hasn't been any written procedures other than what we had in ordinancees. So when someone had contacted me about how we process our rent but fees, I stated I do it for what I know, what was written. And I went back and double-checked some of our ordinancees because someone had told me that like thirty years ago, they didn't handle it this way. So, I tried to pull the oldest water rate and sewer, um, ordinancees that I could find. The oldest one I can find on the computers from nineteen seventy-seven, but the, um, the car sales or anything, nothing was addressed or even clarified about how to file penalties. Um, in nineteen sixty-nine, we filed an ordinance for rates and charges, and it says very vaguely, um, it says, "The time at which such rates regarding penalties or charges shall be paid is now fixed to fifteen days after the date of mailing of the bill." And I think we are, our current water bill reviewing point, so this was, the due date must have been changed at some point. And then I pulled our last ordinance from twenty twenty-seven, and in it, basically it says, "Under collection and the third payment charges, all bills for water services not paid within twenty days from the due date thereof, as stated on such bills, shall be subject to the collection of the third payment charge of two percent on the first three dollars and three percent," and I clipped the three dollars, so it was a little algorithm there. So, uh, what I came to find out was that the reality is not a definite procedure on how we file the penalty. And when I came into the office, I started charting since two thousand eighteen. And I remember that Rhonda and Jenny and I were part of the discussion that says for policy, that felt like penalties needed to be filed on the day after the due date. Um, the process at that point, we decided in fall of two thousand eighteen that they would start processing penalties. Um, particularly if there was a weekend or a holiday, we'd process on the eight AM the following day. And there was, there was some concern then, and there's been different times throughout the last couple of years, question about when our penalties filed because maybe someone came in and paid it noon that day after a weekend, and they felt that that wasn't unfair. Or they felt that was unfair because previously it hadn't been handled that way. Um, but we have been holding consistent since that fall two thousand eighteen that we, we made it penalized, but it's after eight AM on the following business day. So, that whole topic came up, um, I think somebody would come, would have come and pointed out some concerns about it, but I thought I was going to have to end that procedure, not to vote on it tonight or anything, but to start you guys thinking and reviewing that and, um, maybe opening that discussion as to how it should be handled.
I don't know what the exception was. I mean, if, if there's an entity out there that doesn't have some sort of full future waiting.
Right.
If your bill's due on the twentieth, and they pay on the twenty-first, it's late.
Yes, and if you pay it on the twenty-first, it's compounding two dollars. So, if you get your bill over around the first of the month, and it's not due till the twentieth, why pay it until then?
See...
Why wait?
What, what has happened with us sometimes is the governing body, you, you try to be fair, then sometimes you start getting into making exceptions. You hear, you hear a sob short from a person that comes in and, oh, the death to do, or have this and have that, and it is, is... Our humanity, I guess, wanna sympathize with that person and say, oh, it's okay. Well, the, the reality of what happens is that person goes tells that person and say, hey, I was, I was able to pay my bill late. And then all of a sudden, you hammer this other person, then you become unfair. And some people really get bent out of shape. They get bent out of shape to the point that they use our auditory language toward our employees. And we are, as a county council, not going to put up with that. And I'm especially not going to put up with it, and I instructed one of the employees in question, if they start hearing that over the phone, they're immediately supposed to hang up. If that person wants to call back in a calm and collected manner and, and we'll discuss this amongst ourselves, that's fine, and that's acceptable to it, by the way. If you have any complaints against, uh, uh, employees or anything, this is an open forum to be discussed at the town council meeting. And this is the proper way that we dealing with that, and not as an individual basis berating an employee because, uh, they're following instructions of the county council.
Just too, well, Gary, I think that, um, we're not hard roads. If you call down here and you cannot look it on that day, tell us why, give me a good reason. You know, who knows? But if you don't do anything and you're past your due date, what are we supposed to do? Just give us, give us a call.
See, I always tell my clients is that the same way the bills are set up, because I have a cash flow that has to begin with. When the twenty-first hits, my cash flow is missing your cash at that point, so now I gotta go and figure out where to make up that cash flow from. So, it's due on that date, plus, you know, you look back at those eighty-something that takes there, water bill is like seven times that, probably what you were paying back then. So it's, you know, it's, it's a little bit considered amount of money now at this point to be laid on.
Right, and then like I said, we're not in the business to get upset with you, but hey, let us know. If you can't pay it, then you can't give a reason.
But at the same time, we're no different than the gas company, or the cable company, or anybody else, just because you can come down here and talk to somebody that you live next to. So...
Alright, that is that enough said on that?
Yes, it looks like, if I did it down to my pregnant, would that present the overall order procedures?
Yes, yes. I, I, and, and I'm passionate about some things. I'm not saying our town employees are perfect, but they do a good job and they try hard to. So, we as a town council try to protect them, I guess, as much as we can as far as, we can make decisions. And they're always on the front lines and Joe too, but there are decisions, the town council decisions. So, and lie to some things that had happened, but I wanted to make, stress that clearly since we're on the internet too this evening. That if you have a problem or a beef, come down to the town council meeting, we'll all sit down and discuss it together and iron it out and work it out. Okay, next we have an alley closure at Elizabeth Street. Who's here to represent, anybody here to represent family? Okay, you're on.
Come up here and tell us what you need.
Um, currently, we have a budget that's been handled, evidently it hasn't been, and this has been from previous year's act. Um, we currently live on Main Street and Elizabeth. Um, they're directly behind us. The alley behind us has been, we've basically been in this alley for many years. Um, it's now been brought up by a new town member that they want that open back up and be able to permit, and it's basically a person's driveway. We have petition to have this closed, but it's not working. Um, the signatures have all been brought in for, for leaving out of the four that are all property owners towards that alley.
We'll bring it up here as soon as we can.
Let's see, it's not, it's between Elizabeth and the alley just before Lincoln, correct?
Yeah, the one we call Derrick Wayne Alley.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
The alley between that alley and Elizabeth Street.
Where the, where the garage is.
Yes. And you also have another.
Yes, I see.
We decide for what we and actually have the closed alley, so it's just not actually...
The three out of four, do we get all four of them?
They have to have notice, and so if they filed a petition, the way it's been done in the past, it's been done by ordinance. We have to draft and potentially bring it back at the next meeting. The time, if they filed a petition, I mean, whether it was an actual written petition filed or not, I'll get you that, so... That's been done, and as long as, not that...
Yes, with all grounds.
There needs to be, um, notice, basically there's a notice to all the taken landowners. And then an ordinance needs to be created.
Is that a mail notice that goes to all this, or is that...
I'll have to vote it. In the previous ordinance, it indicates notice, it doesn't say no.
Have you heard what's had, have you heard what's had sent on it?
I think it's just a matter of me putting together the ordinance, abandoning it, making sure all landowners get, uh, notice at the next meeting, and then voting on that ordinance, basically, basically in the alley.
Now, you're the gentleman that wants to lift open so you can get to your...
No.
Okay, I got you. I started going with. Okay.
But I didn't know what all the proceed do.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I remember you being here and...
And we don't have a problem with that. We just, we're learning kind of with Scott's help, the, the right way and the legal way to do things. And, uh, what Scott told you, that's what will follow.
Well, the new senator that has recently come into our problem, um, he wants to just basically permit when alleys go that way. He, he has the first of the white way, and we were, you know, really zoned with the...
No, no, where is the new tenant?
He's the one with the garage, wanted to drive him in it, and, which he already has an alley on that side to access.
He has an access part that he wants to go through.
Yeah.
He's our last man.
Yeah, he's the one being difficult to all the neighbors.
Exactly, he's definitely being difficult.
I agree, he's bad.
Well, I've been mowing this for seven years now.
Well, we're, you know, we've been there eight years, so we just always take care of it.
And, and we, and we don't have, I, I have a problem with that.
I don't either.
Always good grass, it's never been...
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have the written ordinance prepared for next meeting, and I make sure, we'll make sure it's on the agenda, and, um, I'll talk to Gloria about what we need to do with the notice for everybody.
And, and does this mean that we have to sign up here? If it's okay to do it?
No, 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 we just have to have a hearing. We have to have notice to be here to be able to...
I see.
You know, I don't know if you knew about this, if it was gonna be brought up today or not, but we gotta make sure that everybody gets notice. It doesn't have, it don't have to consent, but then you have an opportunity to be here to be heard by you and more than anything.
And that, and that's the right way to do it. The same thing that we haven't done, wasn't doing correctly in our condenations. If you're getting closing an alley or have a, or a condemnation, you have the right to be here to please the kids. And then we'll vote on it from there.
Sometimes doing type one that runs down one person's property, well, the notice you get is to the one per, I mean, the person's petitioning the person that runs the side, so it's not a deal. We have this type of situation to what it looks like.
And had you not had another access to his, to his land, it would be...
Well, I mean, I'm still up to here, you know, probably, he would have the opportunity to try to make that argument, but that's the ultimate decision, so you're right.
So then, then what? So, I'm sorry, what? Oh, Dave's, Dave's one, well, you, you'd have to do the same, we'll have to do the same thing for you, because you want to close, uh, alley closure on the... Which, which one you want to close down?
It's, it's the one, uh, North Street and Shot Street.
Oh, you're, you're a separate one, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, well, I, that's, that's, so they go there, I thought.
Same problem.
Can I see this?
There's all these houses, and there's only one person that wants to, uh, drive through.
Well, we have to do the same thing, Scott pointed out.
I think Gloria has all the... For him, yeah, she needs to take this to her and she can get...
Yeah, there's obligations to get started to do it, you would get that. We would get an I R like we...
Boy, I thought you had a new branch or something.
Hope it reminds you a little easier.
We can get on the agenda, but I say it anyway.
Did that, that answer your question too, Jenny?
I got one.
Oh, you got all yours?
I have this already, and people get questions that come in.
Yeah, because, uh, basically I own, it's, it's almost four lots. I own all sides except for one, but Kelly Anderson, who she has agreed to close, she's under. Uh, the one I'm on, I own a garage, and I didn't, I didn't, you know, obviously the utility's gone down there, so I'm working to have them build a garage. I need to close the alley, I need to close them so I can build it. And then I found out the alley that runs on the west side of my house, my house is actually in the alley. So, and again, these are alleys that... My neighbor does that, yeah. But they're, again, their grass, their, their grassways are not, uh, they're not being, I mean, I got one of these streets over the street, but I'm needing it closed. Basically from this alley here, this west of West Street, and this one will run east and west over to the alley that goes from Red Street to Seymour. And then this one goes from South Range to, uh, the property running, it's actually pretty, uh, I believe this one here is already closed on top of the city, but now I'm getting anybody to record it. Does it only go by the garage there? Yeah.
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 Okay, so that's where you got to...
They don't care if we're meant to do it, so I guess we close my day, but I put mine in. Uh, and also I found out that I did all of my purchase property, so I want to build a room out front. But I have to struggle to locate that, uh, my house also sits on top of the town sewer line. But I mean, it's, it's, the, 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 the line is, you know, rather deep, it's like eight, nine feet deep, it's never gonna hurt, it's been there, you know, since two thousand twelve anyway. Uh, so I want permission to, my building have a room, so basically just to cover up a little more to sewer line. I didn't even talk to Mark, if we ever have a problem with it, you've already got to do it anyway, or you can buy my house for a lot of money. So, I'm just, I, that's only two options to deal with it. So I just want permission to go out, out the front, like, ready to, uh, you know, cover a little more to sewer line. I've been there for years, ain't gonna hurt it, and I just want good permission.
Where on this map are you building?
Thirty minutes, thirty.
Oh, okay.
Where on this map are you building?
Uh...
I'm just marking this mark.
Sewer line entire run is, the manhole here, the sewer line entire run is, uh, it runs over here, and I want to cover out here. On, on and out.
Scott, do we handle this the same way?
Yeah, I mean, if, if notice had, had been given all, if it's extended to, uh, you're gonna make a motion to approve it, you still have to draft the ordinance, because the ordinance has to be reported vacating.
Yeah, I own all, all sides except for the... Yeah, I own all, all sides except for the one, uh, I own three sides, and then this like here, I did two times application, and, uh, she didn't have a copy of the deed, so I just had to hold it to mind, but she just, she had thought after work, uh, one day she would get a copy of the deed, and we didn't, she couldn't, she couldn't. Okay.
Let me say I agree with the argument.
Well, because we have to, the county, the county reported it off, it's a hit that all D I S has to be changed, I mean, that's, there's a lot of things we got to change.
Right.
Once it gets through the C's, I can do it by then. And I can draft the ordinance, I can send them a copy of it, if I can get a copy of that map that Scott showed you on it.
Damon, did you get some?
Can I have a copy of the, does that map show what we can be closed?
Yeah, the, the red is my property line. Uh, the closure is the black line, and I own both sides, and I own this side.
The ones that they done, the, 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 passing copy of a map showing that's in place too.
Right, yeah.
Can I have it?
Yeah, that's fine, I'll, I'll, that's the lady who, that consented to sign. Yeah, I got plenty, so when you sign it by my house, that's the sewer line.
Okay, next on the agenda, this is something we've been talking about, annexation. We want to explore the op, that and Scott, and kind of this is exploratory, we want to expand an ex around the town to expand the town. And Scott, how do we?
Because you asked, I wasn't necessarily prepared for that long with a discussion on it.
Well, this is just.
I mean, the issue becomes, it's, I can tell you it's a lot easier if somebody is asking to be annexed because you have the property owner consented to it. If you don't, it becomes a whole different ballgame, and probably a long, longer discussion. So I guess I just really need to know what you guys are kind of looking at.
A lot longer discussion, probably.
This, this is, this is.
Probably a lot longer discussion, though.
This is, this is kind of just exploring, uh, handling. One, one part, like, I'll give you an example, Scott.
You did one, Joe?
I, I agree with this one, we.
Kind of drew it up there. Like on, uh, West Washington, or on Washington Street, the, the line is down the middle of the road. But on the other side of the road, the south side, we service that. But.
Do you want to annex half of the road?
Well, we, we just got half, we'd like the other half.
What do you mean, with the whole road?
Yeah.
Then that requirement extends to kind of missing it.
Okay, but then on this other thing, I, I was approached before and asked, has Westport considered expanding their, uh, yeah, the town limits, and I said, I already hadn't thought about it too much, and then I thought about the Washington Street here. But then our water plant is not within the town limits, the, uh, our sewer plant is not within the town limits. So what Lori's kind of drawn out would be idealistic, three months, here, a precious ground, that's kind of giving you an idea what we're talking about.
We thought we would, am I right, have a footprint, have our water plant within skin right from this. Uh, you could, anybody wants to see that hand, I see no reason to not do this, there's a whole road there that we don't even have howling on. Um, and we also, we go to our line road, there's people on our line road that's on the water plant, and that they're not in the sewer limits, doesn't make any sense. So we would like to, to have that at least after where our folks are buying water from, especially within the town limits, as close as it can be. But, uh, there was, there's no reason for us to not annex this, to get a little more type of style for us.
Very, I can tell you it's very difficult, though, I mean, you've got people, you've got people up there, and you've got people that own property.
Yeah, I understand.
You've got to force them to now come into the town, um, there's a whole process involved regarding the public hearings and.
Well, a lot of that's definitely, too, so that was really.
Now, you can annex different pieces, like, you could do the, the parcel of the, of the water plant on an annex, I didn't have time, but.
Oh, really?
If you look, if you look at Columbus, you could go all the way out there to Wailsboro, this part of Columbus, there are places inside it that are by Donkey County, so, I mean, we could look at potentially doing different pieces to annex, to change part of the town.
We can say.
These slots like this, I can tell you, it's going to be a very big undertaking.
Well, we're thinking there.
No, listen, when you come up to Scott, and I think, what did some of us talk about annexing, was the concern about changing some of their addresses? Uh, Iron Mine Road, uh, Millstone Road, Water Plant Road, all of them are supposed to be taken over to the line on one address, and there was a lot of issues with that as well. So I'm wondering if maybe the, or if something, if a solution to that problem.
And who, who asked us about this was, um.
No, no, no.
Him. No.
But anyway. This, this is just a thought we're looking into, is it crazy idea? I bet crazy ideas.
Well, why don't I put like a, a kind of a packet for all three of you, have to, okay, you, I can tell you, if somebody, if you have these property owners consent to the annexation, it'll hold that a lot easier, if you don't, and people are resistant, it's a, there's a whole other process, and I can kind of, I can kind of tell you, okay, if somebody brings you, you may start approaching some of these people, you know, you may have somebody say, well, we'd like to expand, let's, or we'd be annexed, we'd be annexed, and see, it's kind of where we're at. If you get a lot of pushback, you may decide it's not.
I know it's a lot of these areas being parking areas, you're not going to want to fall by town ordinance.
Right, I mean, that's the problem.
It's going to be an issue. And I, and I know a couple that are on water plant roads that would take real issue to it. All they got to do is back down the road, take a look at their front yard, or you do.
We can, we can floor, and I can kind of lay out with some kind of process, and put it right, and we'll give you guys information, I think. This, this map here, this here is me thinking about what we're going to try to do with the annex.
Well, that may be over, over invested, can you say Scott on, on the map, like, in the, that has cornered right down here, this is our waste street.
Yeah, I see that, and I, and I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that that's something that can be do with or not, it has to be adjacent to some town properties. Now that I, now that I'm thinking about it, it might, but there might be, there might be a way to annex the road going out there that then gets us to, you know, if we talk to the county commissioners, we start saying annex the road that goes there. And then, then, is that adjacent enough for us to attach now to the, uh, waste water plant, so I might, there might be some things we can do, but.
Same, it's like, also, on the other side of West Washington Street, uh, Washington Street.
And that, that can be done as long as, you know.
Oh, it's like you're going to say, as you go down Washington.
Yeah.
Okay, we, I mean, we have both sides, but, and once you get to the road that goes to the lagoon, okay?
Yeah.
And everything else to the west is held, so it's not half and half on the road, it's, it's literally the road stops and then the remainder is road.
Okay.
Actually, John, it is.
It is, is it?
Yeah, the, the town owns the, or the, the north side of Washington is core limit, it's the south side of the county.
Okay. Okay, but they put it's also the dividing line there at the lagoon, too.
Yes, yes.
Well, to me, that was kind of like a no brainer on that one, because, and then we got that narrow slot that goes down to the recycling center. Then, uh, Damon told me in between the recycling, and I never knew this, in between recycling center and then our lagoon for the waste treatment, somebody else owns that part being between those two, but we, we have access to drive across their property.
We own between the, the, the recycling center and the, the, uh, the sewer, we own that property directly, you know, behind it, we, we don't own it either, no, either the west of it.
But, but, but that property is now within the corporation limits.
Right, it is south of it.
That's south of it.
But I, I don't know who owns the road that actually goes to, you know, is that something we purchased here and go, you have a right of way?
We, we own it.
We, we do own.
Where the drive is, we own a strip of property all the way down. And I think, two thousand nineteen, we didn't own the transit road, and, um, we started to ask the people that own that property, also wrote it in that we own some of the sets over, that's the lease to not own that.
Anyway, let's sort of get some buzz going, we'll, we'll see what the feedback is. Yeah, that's all, that's all, yeah, that's all my head lines.
It's time you come get me.
Yeah, somebody, yeah, somebody be after me with a net. But I, I thought, we'll do what we can, and I thought, if you only take big and have the big green or whatever, you never know, somebody's got to start the ball going somewhere, so. If we can even, if we can even get that as part of Washington Street, go down and tie in, uh, the lagoons and all that into the corporate racing limits, at least that's a start in the farther along. We were before.
Well, then even in the end area and stuff, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I need to get moving, uh, I was just enthused about it that one. I thought, why not? I didn't have my big map out here, and I said, yeah, we go everywhere. But, okay, next is, um, Main Street Incorporated.
Speaking of girls, uh, hi, um, we, I was approached by a business owner and asked if there was a way that we could do new signage on each end of town, advertising our local businesses. So, um, I have talked to, um, Cedar County Community Foundation, they have a large grant that we can apply for, that's fifteen thousand dollars. Um, we're going to have to point your project, so, um, we have the, there's like five stages we have to go through, we have passed the first stage. So we would like for, first of all, for permission from the town to be able to do, put new signs up. And, um, we need to figure out like permits, what we have to do is find a permit, um, and like location, if they stay where they're at, or if there's like a better location for them, um, and if, as of right now, all the businesses, we have enough spots on there for them. Um, hopefully at no charge, but there may be a minimal something, um, and then, um, if so, we are also going to talk to the tourism, they will do part of the grant, too. They could do a five thousand dollar grant for us to come and get this. So, um, I know you have copies on what the signage is like, we have, we try to keep local, we've contacted, um, the first one is Chris, um, with. Yes, thank you, um, graphics, and he has all the signage, so two signs, that is going to be about ten thousand dollars, ten C actually, and then he, um, contacted Steve Hall. He is going to do our footwork and everything for forty-five, I think it's a second group. And then, um, Main Street has ours, because we will maintain it, we will do, we are going to put a landscape of marks around it, flowers, a little bit, and we have our bit in there, and it's directly twenty-three hundred dollars, but as of right now, we're hoping that the grant takes care of every bit of it. So we're just needing permission and, uh, do this, um, we had talked to Chris, and he said the signs are kind of in bad shape, and, um, this will last, obviously, a lot longer. And, um, so we're just kind of, because of going through the stages, we're just now going to, we're going to make sure it's okay to go on with it, and, um.
Something about the one just off the page there, three.
And are those signs on property owners or on town property?
The only one I would question about the property owner would be the one on the north side.
From the church?
No, it's, it's, it's.
No, it's a town.
It's somebody yours.
Yeah, Sandy.
Oh, Sandy, yes.
No, that's property.
And then, I guess, a lot of weird, some mental, she goes.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, now by our rule. And we also, we had.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Hey, this is something.
I mean, we already got a existing sign is there, I, I don't know a lot of property owners want some, but it would be very helpful, I mean, I, I would.
And we were making. And we would maintain it.
Drive, sink.
And, and the people, and the people first, the city's robbing, the approach is robbing.
So if we have it on grid.
Oh, yeah, we don't own that.
You don't? Used to.
I take the most, most.
I don't have any.
I'll make the motion that we accept this.
On favor, aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome very much.
Okay, next, Anquanda's request.
Kinda short. Always very short. I don't know if I can say which is longer. Um, what, Anquanda's last year did not get their bug to you, obviously because of coronavirus. We actually calling them the, the award of the year when COVID. But, uh, we need to make the money for something better, I mean, the fact that we didn't make money, we still have the same expenses.
Sure.
That we run, so, we thought about a spring, something running spring for these money. And the idea came up by a conclusion, um, that we could do a car show, but just something a little different. And we need town commission to do it on May fifteenth by the community building, so we'll deposit the range street up to the highway.
To the highway or just what we usually are with the?
Well, they're expecting, from what I've heard, about two hundred cars coming down to these sites.
What do you usually get for the toll?
Um, it was hundred and thirty, hundred and twenty.
Mike Berger is in charge, is kinda in charge of it.
Yeah.
And he has connections everywhere.
Because I've already closed the dean, we still got access to a lot of the other community areas. Um, I, I guess we'll be able to get back there if they cross the dean directly.
I, I think live show we actually took it up to, uh, is that Lincoln, I believe, was the street?
Just take it up to the right, you know, and, and.
Yes.
Are we going to utilize the, the ball guns for the cars?
No.
That would be.
No, I wouldn't wanna do that, because Dr. Midt's too complex and stuff up.
Well, thinking it doesn't have to get beat up.
Yeah, see, most of it is, you know, with these cruises, we're like, a ton of people come down, they spend an hour or two in the league.
Right.
So it's not really gonna have to be lining them up like we do the car show.
Right.
It's basically bringing them down, and we're gonna try to keep it as a fifty-sixties type theme with dancing and things for the kids and music and everything else.
I will put Dr. Henry back if it, uh.
I think Lincoln would do it.
I think that might be clear enough.
I make the motion that we allow them to do this, but with our restrictions in which we can't do that.
On favor, aye. Okay, letter of permission from Mary McCorrigan.
Uh, Mary, I was calling you on Friday about this, and Mary asked if we could get this in the, um, town committee as soon as possible, because that's in how it lies tomorrow. She's writing a grant for the, the Cedar County, um, to request COVID funds. It's part of stage three of their grant application, and it's to provide grants for up to ten thousand to eligible small businesses located in Cedar County. There was, we did several of these to help some of the smaller businesses in the county during the COVID situation. So if you guys approve that, it'll go in and there. And that promotion that we approved it to get the money for the small businesses.
Have a second, aye, on favor, aye.
Um, I also have another announcement, I haven't said anything to anybody, but I think it's more or less about what we've heard it's been for, uh, the longest time based in Indiana, uh, planning commission, and we are going to eventually put the internet app to everybody. Um, forty-three percent of the workforce during COVID would come home. I mean, this is something that's gonna happen, it's gonna be people not ever go back to work, work, they're gonna work from home. Um, if something happens to our schoolchildren, what have we done? We have learned that they can do this online. The problem being that there's a lot of times that you can't get internet in the country. So, we are doing a study now through, um, Purdue to get, and we'll write grants to get this internet in. We'll be using the satellites that are already up there, but it'll be for internet for the county, for the whole counties, all the counties in Southern Indiana. Actually, it's a big undertaking, they'll probably not be in for two or three years yet, but I just want everybody to realize that the older people that don't get on the computer, we will have a place, and then kids from school will be teaching the seniors how to use the computer. How many people in here probably know somebody who lives in the county that said, well, I don't get on the computer, I don't know how? Well, this is gonna be free to teach them how. And, and a lot of times, this is what's so strange, we all recognize it, if you use a computer, they've got a cell phone that they're using for Facebook and whatever, and they don't even realize that that is a computer, you are using one. So, this is gonna be something that we're all looking forward to, um, the kids are really gonna get involved in this too, because kids gone afraid of it, the older people, they're gonna be afraid of it. But if we have another pandemic, say, these, these older people within the country, they can get their groceries by just going online. They can get any kind of delivery, they can talk to their doctors. Why would they not want to do this? Whereas a lot of people that will do it once they realize that you can't do this from home if you can't get out. You can talk to a doctor, you get anything older, you're gonna come right to your home. It, it's just a safe way for everybody, not only the old people, the children, most of us doing here that's in here tonight, but it's amazing to me how big of a place that we have that's just there and nobody can get out. And it's not really fair to the children that live out there.
Parents have to run into the, right door here.
That's exactly right, to get them to get on the internet, so, it's something that will come here within the next few years, so look for it.
It's definitely a study.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna work in there, it's, uh, it's, it's really gonna be good, and, and I'd rather land to be part of it. So, hope I can run to see it happen all the way.
Yeah, I, I had to check on that, I, I heard that one school system, uh, one person had a GPA of zero, but they went middle of the class. I'm not quite sure. Anyway, next thing, last thing on the, uh, agenda is the spring, we need to pick a spring dump, because they, starting in April, there's gonna be another letter to the law to everybody once again about what the ordinance is, uh, I drove around town today. That's what, on the dog park, some people are, huh?
On the dog park?
No, it's on the park. Uh, some people are kinda slipping again, so we kinda need a general reminder that, uh, it'd be nice to keep your property cleaned up. So, with that in mind, uh, in the bill for, uh, water and sewer in April, that'd be a reminder, uh, of what the ordinance says, but we need to take a date in April that we want to take a bunch of.
Something we're having to do, the, uh, shred and.
I think it's the name, isn't it?
It's always.
I think it's the name, it's a kind of name, because I know I had stuff I have to shred from my business, and it's a long way away.
Well, now I'm talking about the one we have here.
Yeah, so I'm talking about it.
Okay, and we'll have a electronic pickup and a shred day, but I really like to have that dumpster the same day, because whenever we do that, it's too much trouble, and we end up with trash all over the place, and that's not gonna happen now. But anyway, we, we do want to get a dumpster here, uh, we filled it up last time, and I'm sure we'll do it, we had two. That's right, the lady brought another, they, they were up here for the same one, so, you didn't make it agree?
Um, I don't, how many is that?
Well, that's why I think.
Secondly, we did it on Thursday, so.
Okay. Absolutely, they can fix it up on Friday, and that even works better, so it's, it's out there for, yeah, we're definitely.
Yeah, because we didn't want to bear with the weekend.
Um. I have to go to the office in my head, what's open, and I'm almost thinking we could do, uh. Why does it say downtown saying?
I really, it's a phrase in South Carolina.
I believe you're right. And then we left all of them.
And this is, this year, yeah, okay, we can do the fifteenth, the twenty-second, or the twenty-ninth?
I don't have any time.
Well, but that game is when we wanted to do it.
Third man.
Okay, we're not doing the Saturday kind of.
That's, maybe a conflict on that.
The fifteenth is Thursday, we're doing that on Thursday?
You said May?
No, April.
Oh, all right.
Hang on, it's just a suggestion, if you're not gonna send a notice out for April bills.
Right.
You might wanna give them at least a few weeks there to get prepared for it.
Yeah, yeah.
I would think the twenty-second could probably be the best.
April, April twenty-second, that's the first, second, third, that's the fourth, Thursday.
Perfect.
You might want to send, you might want to send a note page out this morning.
That's a good time, good.
Yes.
Yeah, let's, let's, you wanna do it on twenty-second?
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, with that being that, Damon and I wanted to touch with you on this, we, because we closed down Burnside last year because of all the extra things that people are taking advantage of, you, did you think we needed to keep that closed, you wanna open it up or?
Well, you would can't, uh, you let it pull dirt down anyway from all the dirt noise that they haul out there, so, uh, we have nowhere to, to out there to do it anyway.
I just know there's a bunch of things around town, again, if we're gonna be getting rid of that, we're not. Okay, I will open it up with, we're done with our business, I'll open it up to the audience, yes, go ahead.
And I got suggestions on this, the, I was worried that parking by the old dumpster closed, I understand that stop the living, I understand them probably pull in there, I feel like we just walk out the first twenty feet, then you can still get like three or four parking spaces on down there after that. The trucks would still pull in. I think it'd be, we need parking there.
Parking all day long, trucking there one day for five minutes.
I have coke and, I was just, it comes through there and they never, I asked them, they said they never have a problem with, that's just a pedestrian.
You mean, we think we should just close it part of the way?
Like, just like, maybe twenty feet, and I'll wait truck, eh, a car, 'cause I understand with, my, it was actually my son, kept parking stupidly there, and he was setting it down, and then, and she kept asking, close up, so I kept telling him, hey, put parking there, so, at least so far out, because he was walking way out, and I think that's, I think I said something, or, I don't know, I thought they said something about it, why did it close?
No, and, and another thing we had too, that when those, uh, big dumpsters come in, they use that in between, uh, they make roll offs, they use that to drive that thing through there.
I think, but, but you're talking about, Will is, we're referencing the fact that we opened up that street instead of you cannot park along the side, because people were parking across from the post office, like, right next to the people that's in building, I think that's what you're talking about. And that's, I mean, that's more than we're gonna do.
Because that, I got this issue the first time, was when it was parking there for the pizza place, and you got, everybody was parking on both sides of it, and nobody could get through it.
I couldn't even get through my car someday, it was, people were parking that crazy, you know? Just parked there a minute, running at the mall.
And both ways, there's been, people are still pulling over, they, they stopped there, they don't give a shit. People have been doing that for some time, that kid.
I still do it myself.
I have no idea how we can fix that, you need to have that parking on, on the side by your building.
That would help, I understand.
I understand that.
Obviously, if you want.
You want to close up those things, so you can park, did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So if you walk up the first twenty feet or so, the trucks could still make that swing in there, and it'll still be twenty-two.
Huh?
All the, oh, close it.
Do I?
Is he saying to close it?
Yeah.
There's no parking, and it's, the road's not closed.
Right, just, just the parking.
Put no parking on both sides.
We do that on the whole street, and then we stop at there at the end of the building.
The way we're parking.
Which, one of the problems too is, uh, what's one of the problems is, is the, the renters in the building by the town parking lot, they're to the point where they're taking up three, four, or five spots, uh, which I had one told last week, because it's sitting in the same spot for three weeks, and they take up two spots, you know, we need to do something about that policy as well, I mean, I mean.
The town parking lot should be the time limit, shouldn't it?
It clearly says no parking.
Well, then why are they parking there, if somebody needs to say something? They'll pay that.
The town does need to say something, that's not what I'm saying. I mean, it's not, to me, the same thing too, I mean. Well, it's not that, like, even there today, if the, the renters of the building need to be parking, you know, they're laying all these in other places with park, not keeping alive in the town.
Isn't there now?
It's, yeah, the whole back.
So nobody else uses it.
Or they can put gravel, okay?
Yeah, we could put gravel.
They could.
Yeah, they could. Okay, we can, yes.
I wanna do next, go ahead.
Okay, what we'll do, what we'll do is, we're going to try and get people from the parking house there to stop parking in the town lot after twenty-four. Well, actually, if they, we put gravel in there, or they put gravel in that. The, uh, alley right near by the house, that is, that, that used to be that, that's a, that's a whole, that's a whole alley, isn't it? So it shouldn't be rabbled, and, and they're gonna have.
We're talking about midwest one post office, you know.
Right, why don't they just park in the parking spots out here? Because they're stuck right in the spot. Like, people, if they're coming through this alley, and they're on the post office, or people, or whatever, there's usually at least three or four parking spots out here.
We're at?
Right here, parking lot.
I mean, it's the same part of the gift, but there's kind of, I mean, that doesn't really bring me on, I mean, we have people coming from one of the streams or Shelbyville, all over the place coming in.
I know.
And so there's times on Friday, there's, there's just, I mean, we might have.
Three parking lots going around.
Well, we're still, we're still going to open the lot across the street there, the town parking lot over there should be for, for businesses, okay? So we'll see who people should be parking in there after.
Is that another thing going on too, Damon, the guy that's right by the parking lot, he's putting his vehicles in there, the parking lot down?
Or not, just him, it's both renters, or, or the.
Both renters.
And he's this lot out here, I mean, there's, there's, uh, sure as you're good with there, not part out here that belongs to people who live over there, that have the driveways. I don't understand why they don't park in the driveway, even this says no parking after ten. Uh, but, I mean, they're, they're starting to fill this much too.
You still hanging in there, Scott?
Trying.
Well, I'm trying to move along. Well, I started looking into all this, we need to start with important in the town parking lot, as Damon pointed out, that after ten o'clock, we'll, we'll try to open that all back up.
Also, Lewis also said that we can use this one right here.
Sure.
Yes.
If I, but I never, you told me we could do that, I was gonna call my employees, do it by five o'clock, and get it.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's.
I think, because there's sometimes, I find, I saw a fire, six employees, parks set over there, if they had it back there, that would.
Absolutely.
They're parking out there.
Maybe just know your boys, that, that they could park from that end of the lot here.
If customers come in here, they usually take either the handicap car or the very next one, the rest of them are usually empty, unless they're working back there or something.
Yeah, just, that's, that's an idea too, you're giving, you're having employees to do their parts, you have those extra. So, we'll see, we'll work with you.
If you guys have time, I could, I could, I could, I could, it would be, it would be, can actually get over here, the church here, I mean, that's production parking, uh, uh, that's a two-way street, right?
No, no.
It's not just one-way?
Uh, it's still two-way, you guys never, you guys never officially.
You guys, you should. I've had a couple of times coming out wherever we are that way, and cars shooting in from the street.
It should be, I thought we did.
I thought we, I thought we made that whole thing a one-way.
Yes.
If we did, it needs to be.
I think you have to call.
Do that entire street side.
Close, we need to make this a one-way street.
Is that on the gym for next month, to close it all?
Just one.
Yeah. We think it's a one-way.
The one way, and two-way, going from the drop box place, we're just out.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one way, or there's something.
All right, well, we'll take care of that, make that one way, we can't do it now, we'll have it done by the next meeting.
Yes.
We'll, we'll take it, we'll go.
I'll just give my name, so we can just get your phone.
Okay.
So, my name is George Sherman, I don't, the park's gonna be, we can buy a ten-year permit. On February first, I got a letter, um, telling me, basically just saying that we did three, four, twenty-eight spots that were existing. And, there's room enough in the park by state code to do ten more, okay, there's enough states. The problem was, and back to the water, we all started, and my apologies, I'm getting on the gym, but I got invited, I'm pretty sure, because of all the water stuff. But I just, I'll, I'm just making a statement to the town about what I'm doing and why. I'm applying to the state for additional ten spots, you know, they're gonna say no, because they're gonna say the water can't handle, we still get the upgrades done, we're, we're stuck. So, at least twenty-fourteen.
George, can I give you a little bit of information on that?
Yeah.
Um, I wish you would have called me, because I did talk to some people, um, Rock the Brady, um, who have connections with items, those all of our first funds, everybody.
Yeah.
And we talked about the flow too, and the, what would be recommended at this point, and we did this, um, discuss on Friday, that he felt that your additional ten points would not interfere with that situation, that it would be approved. So, I, I was hoping to have it done for this meeting, um, but I am working on a letter of approval, of recommendation from the town for you. Um.
Surprise.
Surprise, yeah.
Well, all I was gonna tell you was that I'm going ahead, I, I, the permit is at the state, here's why. My sewer in there, and my water in there, is just as dated as the sewer of water in the county. I don't wanna put twenty-eight brand-new homes in there, twenty-eight brand-new homes in there. And then have a problem in there where it's not big enough, it's got a six-inch, maybe seven-inch, I wanna get meters, so everybody can be metered in there with a new meter system. Irregardless if the state says you have to wait, which doesn't sound like they're gonna make it, but I'm trying to upgrade the park's infrastructure so it's ready for whatever happens in the future. If I have to wait to get my stand all the way, I have to have a state, tons of park, it's regulated by the state, state lady drives through it, calls me and says, hey, you need to do this, hey, you need to do that. Any expansion in the state, in Indiana, multiple parks, has to have an engineer's stand. I'm applying for one, and I just, but I appreciate some information, I, I, maybe I talked to him on the phone, but. I, I, and I want the town to, to, whatever I can do to help with the grant or, it, you know, it, it's the right thing for everybody, not just.
We appreciate how, how well you've stayed the rest of the, the things that you're doing down there.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be positive. Be with them all. Kyle, anything? Scott, do you have any?
I know, it looks like he needs to get back to the car. I'm kicking you out, buddy.
We lost John's entirely, we lost John's entirely, I don't know if his battery went out or what.
Yeah, he just doesn't talk.
This is the main piece, and Mark Campbell, the water superintendent, uh, every year, they, um, hire to have the lake cleaned out with the water treatment plant, and it's over our one thousand dollar commission, so I'm just asking for permission to spend that thirty-four hundred dollars, it's the same last year, um, just permission to do that to the water treatment plant.
Let me go, you have a second?
Yes.
You sure? I will officially close the bar eight, twenty twenty.
Oh.
Wait a minute.